Good evening, everybody. It is 6:30. We will go ahead and begin. Um, please join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the Republic which stands. A nation under God. For all. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Days?
Here.
Councilmember Dunaway?
Present.
Councilmember Fitch?
Here.
Councilmember Gray?
Present.
Councilmember Clancy?
Here.
Councilmember Trachis?
Present.
Councilmember Harder?
Present.
Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of October 6, 2020?
No move. Right. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Motion carries. The October 6, 2020 Journal is approved. The Journal of the Meetings of October 13th, October 20th, and October 27th, 2020 have not yet been finalized. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Madam Chair, under zoning matters this evening, item number one, 6th District.
I'd like to hold this on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item number two, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be instructed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Thank you. Item number three, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Moving on to road and bridge matters, item number one, 1st District.
Receive, file, plans, specifications, and detailed estimate of cost be approved, and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids pending federal highway administration authorization as requested, and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, 2nd District.
Um, before I say this, there is a lot of feedback noise that I'm hearing, so I don't know if folks want to mute when you're not talking. Um, but receive, file, plans, specifications, and detailed estimate of cost be approved, and the Director of Procurement be authorized to advertise for bids pending federal highway administration authorization as requested, and a copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Moving on to other communications. Item number one.
Receive and file same motion for item number two, and that will be the order.
Item number three.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number four?
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number five?
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number six.
Receive, file, and the issuance of a request for proposal be approved as requested. Is there a second?
Second, Gray.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number seven.
Receive, file, and the appropriation transfer be approved as requested.
Second, Gray.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number eight.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number nine, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the-- oh, I'm sorry. That is yours, Councilwoman Gray.
Receive, file, and the change of owner be approved as requested.
Second, Days.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 10, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 11, 7th and 3rd Districts.
Receive and file or refer to the county councilor.
So ordered.
Item number 12, 2nd District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 13, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 14, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 15.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number 17, and that will be the order.
Item number 18.
Um, receive and file. I want to note that a significant portion of this request is for patrol and special operations equipment, including riot batons and pepperball launchers. I'm also aware that the police department is in the process of engaging the community around its use of force policy, and there was also an external review of the police department underway. Therefore, um, let's hold this request pending input from all stakeholders.
Item number 19, 2nd District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number 20.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number 21, 2nd District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. Uh, please read the add-ons.
Under other communications, item number one, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number two, 2nd District.
Receive, file, and the county councilor be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered. I don't believe we have a report of special committees. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm jumping ahead. It is now time for the report of the County Executive. Dr. Page.
Thank you, Lisa, and good evening, everyone. As I told the media at my press conference yesterday, we've come to a crossroads in our fight against COVID-19. In just last month, the daily number of new cases in St. Louis County has tripled. Our hospitals are nearly full. Our health department is overwhelmed and exhausted. Our state and region are setting new records nearly every day. Election Day has come and gone, but the pandemic remains. Our fight against COVID-19 has never been political. The disease doesn't respect party, race, or religion. And right now, the disease is winning. I ask every one of you on the council and every one of you in the community to put aside your political differences and work with me to get this virus under control. This is one issue that is not partisan. It's one issue that requires everyone to do their part. In St. Louis County, we have ordered everyone to wear masks in public, and we have limited the number of people who can be in a business or gather in one place. But still, the number of cases grows. We hit an all-time high yesterday with 844 cases. We now have lost 900 of our residents to this virus, and statistically, we could lose another 100 of our friends, family members, and colleagues over the next week if the caseload remains as it is. No one wants to shut down our economy. We all understand that doing so causes harm. But we cannot let COVID-19 transmission continue to rage out of control in our community. If our hospitals fill up because of COVID cases, that means you might not be able to get into a hospital when you need it for emergencies such as heart attack or car accident. If we let it get to that point, even more lives will be lost. I want to be clear with you. If things don't change, our public health orders are not followed, we are weak or so away from putting in more restrictions. And these restrictions will be measured and thoughtful. These restrictions will be designed to have the greatest impact on slowing the virus, and these restrictions will be the only path forward to numbers of people getting sick with this virus continue to climb. We have one last chance to slow the spread of COVID-19 before we are forced to take additional action. We are working with the pandemic task force to determine exactly what data points would be that would trigger more restrictions. With those numbers in hand, the goal for all of us should be that we avoid reaching those markers. Meanwhile, here are the actions I'm asking county residents to begin following immediately. First, avoid personal interactions. If you can work from home, do so. If you can conduct business virtually, then do so. If you can provide curbside service to keep customers from gathering inside, then do so. Remember, the safest place to stay is in your home. Second, wear a mask everywhere, except with your immediate household. It doesn't matter how much you trust your friends. This is not a trust issue. This is a kindness and safety issue. Three, to help our residents stay connected while limiting the threat of large outbreaks, we ask everyone to identify a small group, under 10 people, that you come in regular contact with. That could be your family, or perhaps another household or two that you regularly interact with. It could be close friends or colleagues. We ask that you limit your personal interactions to this group. When you see members of your group, please continue to social distance and wear masks. If any member of your group gets sick or tests positive, that person must alert everyone in the group immediately so that they can quarantine and get a test. In other words, each group must do its own contact tracing. Why? Because of the extremely high number of new cases, the Department of Public Health must prioritize its contact tracing to focus on the most vulnerable people. And that might not be you or your friends. Four, if you have participated in a gathering such as a wedding, a party, or a funeral, or if you have traveled to see others, it is our strong recommendation that you immediately self-quarantine for 14 days. This will limit the risk of transmitting COVID-19 to others. No gatherings are safe. We cannot emphasize this enough. There are not enough protections that can be in place for weddings, festivals, uh, or a party in your own backyard to keep people you love safe from COVID. St. Louis County recommends that you go virtual with these gatherings or simply hold off until we are in a safer place to come together. Five. Now more than ever, remember this: hands, face, and space. Wash your hands regularly, cover your face with a mask, and keep six feet of space between yourself and others. We urge everyone to take these steps now to give us a chance to avoid more drastic orders. Do it for your community, for your friends, and for your family. That's all for now. Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you, Dr. Page. Um, we will now move on to report of special committees. I don't believe we have anything this evening, so we will proceed, um, to our public forum. Um, just a reminder to everyone about the rules of our forum. Only comments sent to councilcomments@stlewisco.com on the day in which the meeting is being held. At least one hour before the meeting is set to start will be recorded into the public record. The email must contain the commenter's name, and the message must be 400 words or less, which is the equivalent of three minutes of verbal communication, which is what we would, um, permit if we were together in person. Uh, the administrative director or a designee will read the comment out loud, and it will be recorded into the journal. Madam Clerk, please pers-- please tell us how many comments we have first, and then please proceed.
Madam Chair, we have 64 written comments this evening.
Thank you.
Excuse me. The first comment is from Joanna Bodin. Bodine, sorry. Mispronounced that. First, let me say thank you to Councilman Harder and Fitch for truly listening to the concerns of those writing to our council over violations of the county charter by Sam Page and the potential corruption brought by his actions. I support your request for further investigation. Second, I witnessed voter irregularities myself voting at the Board of Elections in person absentee. We were told that CTCL grant money was necessary to ensure more hands, feet, and eyes would prevent that. My personal experience says it did not. I reported that appropriately, but it would behoove the council to look into that further as well and understand if STL has subjected itself to some of the same potential for infiltration into the system due to the open nature of the technology being utilized. Lastly, we've been communicating the same process for months related to lockdowns, lockdown threats, the blame we as citizens carry, yet Sam Page believes that he and the county health department are entitled to continue this charade. Over and over, we are lectured about vigilance, yet on Election Day in St. Louis, only one week ago, Sam Page was at the polls talking with an elbow-bumping constituents without a mask on. The in-your-face hypocrisy is getting old, and it is damaging our communities. Try something new and different. This is why we have a council for a variety of thought. One person with absolute control in the same continued process is not making a difference. Engage differently for a different outcome. We are seeing increased cases but not increased deaths. We are seeing increased percent of hospital capacity. With the data presented, it is difficult to understand that it's-- that it's-- excuse me, if that's due to a higher COVID hospitalizations or less ability-- less availability due to fewer staff and overall capacity. We need processes to evolve to fit the need of our community and those we support, including surrounding areas. Quit blaming our kids for the spread when our county executive was just as likely to have been guilty based on his behavior just one week ago. Hashtag Sam Page is an asymmet-- asymmet-- asymptomatic spreader. Thank you. From Barry Kraft. Please take the time to look at who is getting sick in St. Louis County. What are their ages? What are their pre-existing conditions? Where are the people in our county hospital beds from? Why not point out exactly who that is? Do a better job of protecting the vulnerable instead of punishing and blaming young people and those of us who are healthy. Thank you for your time. From Stacy Cammerer. Another week, another letter. I've written on this subject before, but it appears several of you, specifically Dr. Page, appear unaffected by my, our concerns regarding children and adolescent mental health. If you want to talk about hospitals being in capacity, let's talk about inpatient child and adolescent inpatient psychiatric units in St. Louis being way over capacity. I know this because my job is psychiatric evaluations in several area emergency rooms. Did you know that one local unit for kids is permanently closed due to COVID, and another has been closed since COVID with no reopening dates? So while our local area youth pay the price for shutdowns and isolation, we are forced to transfer these kids several hours away from their families due to no local inpatient beds. Kids that we would never-- kids-- excuse me, kids that we would ne-- would have never seen in local emergency rooms. Sorry about that. So when you want to think of a hospital bed crisis and dangle that term in front of the public, then consider that. Few calls to a local psychiatric directors would confirm this if you would take the time. Our youth need normalcy. Their very lives depend on it. Maybe your task force should look into that. Sincerely. From Isora Liggins. Good evening. In 2017, Dr. Robert Hughes, President and CEO of Missouri Foundation of Health wrote, quote, "Racism and discrimination are two stress factors shown to have negative impacts on health, causing an increase in depression, cardiovascular disease, breast cancer, and mortality. Black people who experience frequent racism are more susceptible to heart disease, hypertension, diabetes, and stroke," end quote. Now in 2020, racism has been declared a national health crisis, and one of many who has experienced frequent racism here in St. Louis County resulting in lasting side effects. Judicial unfairness has made way-- has made way for more unrest in the African-American community. It is time to take an aggressive step toward reform in the judicial administration system. My approved disability benefits were taken in plain sight due to the lack of my basic rights not being enforced. This still paralyzes me today. Without enforcement of basic rights, we can have everything and still have nothing. This is what slavery really looks like. For years, myself and others have come before the council seeking fair treatment. There is a selected group with disproportionate power to enforce decisions and administer laws. Resources are needed to support improving the mindset of this selected group. Councilman Trachis told me, "We need to vote the right people in." The people spoke on November 3rd. Now we need the people in to do the right thing. 25 years is too long for me to suffer. Racism, including discrimination, has become a serious impediment to the quality of life and health of the minority population, particularly African-Americans. Executive Page, I implore you to establish a judicial task force that will be committed to breaking down the structural barriers in our judicial system that prevent minorities, particularly African-Americans, from receiving fair treatment. The task force would provide oversight, build statistics, and generate reports so the administration will be better able to assess the needs of the people. A special thanks to my Councilwoman Rida Days and Councilwoman Rochelle Gray for continuing this important conversation on racism. If we can contain the pandemic and create a vaccine, we are-- we are confident we can implement the fairness to cure-- the fairness cure for racism. To Executive Page and this entire county council, we are ready to do our part. The Missouri Commission on Racial and Ethnic Fairness was created by the Supreme Court to address fairness. And that's at the end of 400 words. From Annie Fallon. Dr. Page, first of all, why do you insist on spreading fear and bullying the residents of St. Louis County? Your press conference-- your press conference was very disappointing yesterday. While you state how full hospitals are, why not tell the whole truth and state how many are hospitalized in the ICU and on ventilators due to COVID? You work in a hospital. You know they have to-- you know they have to operate at 80, 90% to make a profit. Oh, while thinking about the hospital, why are you still working at Mercy? You told the press and fellow council members that you would put your hospital job on hold while being county executive. Isn't it stated in the charter that the county executive would only-- would be their only job? Oh, you are working at the hospital on your free time. Must be nice to have free time. I'm a school nurse, and I haven't had any free time since the start of the pandemic. I don't even make half the salary of a county executive. Back to your press conference. You stated home is a safe place to be for everyone. Really? Not for everyone. Several homes are very unsafe. Before making that statement, did you think about the children being abused or the domestic violent cases that happen in your safe homes? What about those people suffering from mental health conditions? Have you looked at the suicide rate lately? Yes, they are on the rise. Word of advice. If you're going to blame-- if you're going to shame high schools, make sure you know how to pronounce them, and maybe you should name them all. Yes, the Halloween party you referred to had students from several other high schools, at least five other high schools, but I'm not going to name them. It's not the school's fault. You don't like the private Catholic schools because they are succeeding. Almost all of their positive cases have come from activities or events outside of school. Yes, students had to quarantine, but that's because they were in-- they were-- they were a close contact. I can also guarantee that that was not the only Halloween party. Please stop picking on our kids. Why are you constantly telling people to wear a mask, but how many polling places did you go to last week and talk to people without a mask on? You're an anesthesiologist, not an epidemiologist or an infection-disease doctor. They are the experts. Listen to them. And that's at the end of 400 words, Madam Chair. From Michelle Etherington. I wanted to voice my opinion on the pending shutdown threats. I cannot understand how you think a shutdown is the solution. The virus is here, and it'll stay here. Didn't we try this before? It didn't work. Here we are again. One group that suffers tremendously from a shutdown is the students. They need classrooms to learn and sports to exercise, especially since the virus has low impact on the age group of kids in school. If parents want to keep their kids home, they have that option. Also, you'll be killing businesses when the holidays are usually a prosperous time for them. When businesses fail, their employees suffer too. However, businesses in Jefferson County and St. Charles County are booming. Bottom line, a common sense approach would be a better solution. Wash your hands, social distance, and protect the vulnerable, not hide healthy people. Let me decide what is good for my family. St. Louis County residents are contributing approximately 34% to the current COVID hospitalizations. Don't punish us. Thank you for listening. From Nicole Harms. Another Tuesday, another email. Mr. Page, I must say that you sound like a scolding father as you tell us we have one last chance. Are COVID numbers up? Yes, but primarily hospitals and 65% of those patients are not from St. Louis County. You know the definition of insanity, doing the same thing over and over and expecting different results. Shutdowns do not work. We're just keeping the can down-- keep kicking the can down the road. Remember 15 days to flatten the curve? Shutdowns are not the answer. Why are you punishing the young and businesses? Let's focus on the at-risk population. My children aren't in school today, but for the first time since March. These kids need to be in school. We need a balanced approach to this virus. We cannot shut down because our kids and our county will not survive. County Council, you need to get back your responsibilities before there is no county to run. I beg you, restrain the power-hungry Mr. Page. From Rachel Yost. I'm writing to express my extreme concern with the overreach of power to infringe on the freedoms of constituents by Dr. Sam Page and the St. Louis County Health Department. We need to limit authority and have proper checks and balances. Yesterday's announcements by Sam Page were no less than fear mongering. Cases are up because people are being forced to be tested over and over again to return to work, school, sports. Cases among students are not up, and those that do contract COVID are barely getting symptoms. Let the virus run through students so they can get it, get over it, and be less susceptible to it in the future. Like we do with every other virus that goes around, every pediatrician I've talked to agrees with this. They are all more worried about the flu than COVID for their patients. For those in our community that are immune compromised-- and why are there so many in our communities nowadays? They should protect themselves. Our society is now set up to stay at home or engage at levels that make sense for them, working, shopping, et cetera. Blanket mandates on all of the city, county will only exacerbate the consequences we have seen so far. Suicides, depression, loss of business and livelihoods, et cetera. No mask mandates. The science is baseless. Cases are on the rise, and everyone is wearing them. Clearly, it isn't working. So let those who want to wear them do so, but for those of us that don't need to, remove the mandate. No more limits on youth sports or spectators. Let all children participate in volunteers-- in volunteer sports if they want. Let those who want to watch do so. Again, if you're concerned about contracting COVID, just like any other virus, make the decision yourself. Let healthy people make their own decisions too. No building capacity limits. Let places of business go back to full capacity. Small businesses and restaurants are closing every day. Stop the bleeding. People should be allowed to take the risks they desire. Businesses can decide for themselves how they want to run themselves during the virus, just like they do every flu season. Bring back in-person county council meetings. We, the people, deserve to be able to sit in our elected-- sit in on our elected officials, but we're not. The question is why? The excuses have been baseless. I appreciate your service to the constituents of St. Louis County, and that is at 400 words. From Stephanie Herbig. Herbig check. I hope I pronounced that correctly. Please think long and hard before you enact shutdowns, especially ones that affect our children. The schools and sporting leagues are doing a fantastic job following their COVID plans. We must show that we support our school and sport officials. We must also find a way to move forward-- Living in a world of fear, of shutdowns, tears, anxiety, and anger is no way to live. We are all facing long-term consequences from all the stress we've been under. Please encourage your surrounding counties to enable mandates to help stop the spread of COVID-19. Just punishing St. Louis County, which in turn punishes more than much more, excuse me, which in turn punishes much more as most of the private schools follow St. Louis County rules. Will that will get us nowhere as long as five miles down the road has no rules. Lastly, please say a prayer and think of our children, such as my son. He's finally gotten to a lower maintenance dose of his anxiety and depression. I am afraid restrictions and further disruption of life will have us all going will have us going all the way back to the beginning of our mental health journey. He is eight years old, he's eight years old, he's not the only child suffering. Thank you. And from Kathy Cave. Please stop making our children carry the brunt of this virus.
Continuing with the comments from Lori Richmeyer. According to your press conference yesterday, COVID cases are on the rise. However, our hospitals are not overwhelmed. I'm an RN and I have connections, fellow MDs and RNs to many of our local St. Louis County hospitals and facilities. They are not overrun with COVID cases. The staffing seems to be the bigger issue due to layoffs from shutting down in the spring. What happened to fifteen days of flattening the curve? Dr. Page, as a fellow medical professional, we all know this virus is not going anywhere and we need to live with it. These shutdowns, as well as mask mandates, are not working. This is a world problem, not just St. Louis County. Open your eyes and look at surrounding counties. They have a rise in cases but remain open. Why are we taking so many patients from outside St. Louis County? These are half of our hospitalized COVID cases in St. Louis County currently. What do we know about these hospitalized people? Do they have other comorbidities? What is their age? Percentage from St. Louis County versus outside counties? Please confirm these are also not school-aged children, such as the dismet kids you shamed on live television yesterday. What events are spreading the virus since you claim to be contact tracing or lack of if you aren't? Why are we over quarantining? Since when have we quarantined the healthy? Why not isolate the vulnerable? Everywhere I go, the people of St. Louis County are wearing masks in public and following all of your other ridiculous mandates. For what? These measures aren't working, Dr. Page. Maybe you need to focus more on educating people on diet, exercise, and taking supplements. Stop threatening us when we have been following your rules for months. If they are working, the numbers wouldn't be rising. Next comment is from Jenny Hogg. I am the parent of two school-aged children and reside in St. Louis County. My children attend school in person and we fully believe that all children should be in school and able to play sports. Sam Page is threatening another lockdown and the science does not support his decision. One man should not have unilateral control over so many lives. I agree that COVID is problematic, but when in history have we ever restricted healthy individuals in fear of people getting sick or hurt? And why should we support another round of lockdowns that threaten the mental health of our children and expect a different outcome from the first lockdown? You cannot regulate away a virus. Instead, we must shelter our most vulnerable and allow healthy individuals to live their lives in the pursuit of herd immunity. Next comment, excuse me, is from Laura Reese. Here we are again, or should I say still. Little has been done to help resolve the spread, but yet kids are still being punished for what they're doing and in many cases, what they're not doing. Yes, there are kids who aren't taking this seriously, going to parties, et cetera. There are many parents doing the same. But there are many kids who are taking this seriously. They've been following your rules, staying home, only going to school, wearing a mask, et cetera, et cetera. What has it gotten them? Very little. Many are still having to quarantine for fourteen days because someone in their class or on their team tested positive. They're home doing next to nothing for two straight weeks with no symptoms, nothing. Who is worried about these children's mental health? Who is worried about what can be done to ensure kids aren't slowly pulling away, pulling into themselves, stressed out, and anxious to their core? This will be the lasting pandemic. Please, give them what you can. Be firm about masks, but give them something that they can hold on to. How can we expect them to just keep going at this pace or worse when the adults don't even know how we're making it? Please, consider everything when you make your decisions. The future lives of all of these kids depends on it. Next comment is from Keith Hinton. I am a parent of two daughters that both attend high school, participate in high school sports, play club volleyball, and attend church in St. Louis County. I am also a coach that coaches in St. Louis County. I'm sure you have seen the data that show very low possibility of transmission through youth, especially while extra precautions are being followed. Reports are showing that the biggest drivers are eighteen and older. I am asking you to please do what you can to not allow more prohibitions on our children. I ask that you put aside your own personal agendas and stop punishing our children. Current data shows that this is not about protecting the children. The recent cases you mentioned, as well as past cases, were found to be contracted outside of school and sports at parties or extracurricular activities. I am asking that you support our kids so that the children that need school and sports can go back to what they love. The data also shows depression, suicide, and drug abuse has skyrocketed since the start of this. Please consider that our kids need these interactions and data shows they are not drivers of this. Next comment is from Jennifer Passanais. I am writing to voice my displeasure for the looming shutdowns of St. Louis County. Citizens are being treated like children and this is a democracy, not a dictatorship. Everywhere I go, people are wearing masks, lining up to get into the store, social distancing, et cetera. The virus continues to spread. Another shutdown would not only hurt our economy and mental health, but also our physical health and ability to fight a virus such as this. The virus will not simply go away. We need to protect the vulnerable and elderly and let everyone else live their lives. This is damaging our children. I am so disappointed in St. Louis County and its leadership. This is about control of a community, not control of a virus. Stop lying to taxpaying citizens. You are my employee, not the other way around. You are charged with protecting and serving this community and you are accomplishing the opposite. St. Louis County is dying and will continue to do so under the current leadership. Provide this community with accurate and honest data and do not force another shutdown. Next comment is from Nicole Fisher. I want to say all the restrictions on our community is doing nothing but hurting the people you are supposed to represent. When a business closes, that means workers cannot support their families. It is already hard enough to find employment as it is. How are students going to get an education they deserve when school is online or one to two days a week? How are the high school students going to prepare for ACT tests and pass? How can they get credit hours when they are not actually present? You will end up with a third grader who is not able to read. Nobody will want to take responsibility and blame it on COVID. All of this has affected children's mental health. The things like sports, school, and friends are no longer allowed per your recommendation. I have seen the sparkle slowly fade away, not only in my own child, but others. The COVID virus is here to stay. And and as a community, we need to focus on building back small businesses, having our children receive an adequate education since most students go to public schools and do not have the privilege to send them to private schools. They are the only schools having in-person five days a week. The outcome of our future appears to be scarier than COVID. Next comment is from Tracy Bennett. Our kids need school and sports, they are finding ways to do it safely. Don't go back on this. Mental health issues have skyrocketed during your six-month shutdown. Some of that damage is irreversible. Next comment is from Jason Moore. Your threats to shut down the county again is exactly why we fight. Data and interpretation of that data has been biased and delivered based on politics instead of science, the left's favorite word. As a result, we've all been forced to modify our behavior, whether it is necessary or not, to flatten the curve or control the spread. There are no one-hundred-percent assurances with anything in life, including how to manage a virus that is going to do what it is going to do, whether someone modifies behavior or not. If you're out and about and just happen to be next to someone who's infected and may or may not know it, you may or may not contract it. Life's a risk at the end of the day and many have been intentionally scared, not just by the virus alone, but by the way it's being exploited for political gains. Everyone should have a right to make their own decision on whether to go out or stay in, wear a mask or not wear a mask, visit a business that mandates a mask or not, et cetera. This is their personal responsibility based on individual risk tolerance that is the hallmark of our country. Kepric size kepricisly, sorry. Throwing out mandates and shutting economies and schools in total does nothing except expose everyone to needless emotional and financial turmoil on an epic scale for very little return on investment by our government other than subservience for their own selfish political gain. When businesses are closed, schools shuttered, kids and their parents requiring psychological help, what's next? Businesses don't just pop back up. Many are gone for good, especially if closed for a second time. People's finances are destroyed. Kids are permanently scarred by the entire event that they will carry throughout their lives. St. Louis County will take years to recover economically and by that time, a good portion of residents will have left the county for greener pastures, north, south, and west. What's left in the rubble? As of Monday, November ninth, I visited Jefferson City to walk the halls of the Capitol to lobby for revisions to state laws to guard against future government usurpations of individual rights in emergencies without strict oversight. I will continue this moving ahead until laws are passed ensuring this never happens again anywhere in Missouri. Never again. Next comment is from Debbie Bogar. I implore you to consider alternatives to additional shutdowns. If the shutdowns and mandates haven't worked so far, why would they work in the future? Let's try something else. We've been at this long enough to know more about it. Please ask your expert team to examine the data and come up with other options besides closing down our houses of worship, our schools, or sports, and our businesses, none of which has worked. Don't single out groups to shame them. You should be trying to bring people together, not pit us against each other. This cannot be about keeping St. Louis Countyans from actually getting the virus. We simply can't win that battle. What should we be doing to improve our odds of beating it? Exercise? What supplements might help? Should we encourage flu shots? How can we protect our high-risk people with little impact on the rest of our citizens? Simply talking about the number of cases and the positivity rate are not good measures of either success or concern. COVID ICU occupancy was only at twelve-point-six percent as of ten-twenty-six. Deaths continue to decline. Remember, this was originally fifteen days to flatten the curve. That curve flattened months ago. I lost a very good friend to this virus a few days ago and I've had several family members and friends who've recovered. I take this seriously. But after eight months of this, I still can't believe we are talking about mandates and shutdowns. What's that old saying? The definition of insanity is doing something over and over and expecting a different result? We can't keep doing the same thing. Our kids should be playing sports, our businesses need to be running at full capacity, and we need to stop living in fear of losing our livelihoods. The mental impact on our people, young and old, is real and growing and it's scary. Dr. Page, I don't envy your position here. I don't have the answers either. But we have a lot of really smart people in this county. Invite other people to your task force. Charge them with coming up with a well-rounded list of options to consider. Try something else. Next comment is from Christina Cole. As I sit here and think about your newest announcement of possibly more shutdowns, I am dumbfounded. I just finished loading my car up to spend some time in our winter home in Florida. Where we are going, no masks are required unless a business requests it. Restaurants are one-hundred-percent open and people are moving on with their lives. Even Disney World is open with people from all over the world visiting. Then I think, how in the hell can Disney stay open and St. Louis County can't? It makes zero sense. At some point, people will just ignore your suggestions because that's what they are and get on with their lives. For me and my family, we fully intend to enjoy the holidays with family and friends. The psychological effect on our children has been huge. I have a daughter whom is a junior chemical engineering major. She achieved a four-point-oh last spring. This fall, she shut down and quit attending three classes. Why? In her words, why should she go? There is no personal contact, teachers are not teaching, they are posting videos of lessons. She can't teach herself. If you have questions, they don't respond. This is the same child that graduated high school with a four-point-one and a thirty-two on her ACT. I fear for what the future holds for my child as well as others. This cannot continue. Have you asked your child what he thinks? I would bet he doesn't agree with you. He may tell you he does, but what he tells his friends is most likely totally different.
Madam Chair, continuing from Stacy Powers. I'm writing regarding the potential of further restrictions being placed for St. Louis County. I have two small children, four and six, both who have been in elementary school since August and thriving in a healthy and supportive community. It is important for me to share my four-year-old, who was three through the summer, struggled immensely with her overall mental and emotional health through your last, quote, "stay-at-home" order. This child is now riddled with anxiety and worry and has to seek counseling. She's four. Since joining her peers in school, she no longer feels anxious. She doesn't feel isolated. She has not been regressing, she has joy, admits the complications of school and a pandemic. She wakes daily to say, yay, it's school, I have friends, and it's fun. She is four and she doesn't mind a mask for eight-plus hours a day. She has to attend daycare as my husband and I both work. Well, we hope this continues, but with shutdowns that could change our employment status. My six-year-old in kindergarten is thriving mask and all. He has been learning to read and write and his skills are growing quickly. These skills cannot be taught to his age group on a computer. Educators have a reason. Due to the malleability of the brain, they teach these skills in K and first grade when its children can grow and absorb them quickly and set a base for forever learning. Pediatricians recommend no more than one-point-five hours a day of screen time. What are we teaching our children when we are hindering their brains through school on the screen? It's a concerning and damaging thought to a parent. With new restrictions, our kids will fall behind the kids in other counties immediately surrounding St. Louis County. And my family and I may be forced to take action and our tax dollars, isn't that what matters, and move out of St. Louis County. I'll also hate to see the small businesses that we have here that make St. Louis a wonderful place to live, close as well. They cannot afford another shutdown, no matter how long the duration. My brother-in-law owns a restaurant here. New restrictions of place, he has had to close for lunch. His food prices have skyrocketed due to lower volume making higher prices. And that's four hundred words. From Amanda I'm going to mispronounce this and I apologize in advance, Gara Bagilia? Hope I pronounced that correctly. Jeer tyrannical anesthesiologist page. First of all, I will not congratulate you on a fraudulent win that has St. Louis County on the list of voter fraud, thanks to your toy Lisa Clancy for forcing the vote of the grant. For some reason, you feel the need to attack private schools. Were you picked on as a kid, were you not invited to the parties like the like the cool kids, so now you feel the need to call out hard-working students in schools? Or was it that your son wasn't invited to this 200-person party? Wasn't 200 people because your, because your poor son will never get invited because his dad is a dictator? Open your check, excuse me, open your checkbook now, because no business will survive. Open your home, because abuse will go up. Have you once acknowledged the suicide rate in these kids? No, you haven't. Your shutdowns are proven ineffective by world leaders. Stop blaming sports and schools. We all know the laws, you are not above them, you are punishing a county that has nothing to do with 85% of the people in hospitals. This whole letter would be filled with expletives. You are just as bad as Hitler, and I don't know how your family lives with you. From Carrie Carston. We understand that you believe what you're doing is in the best interests of the county. However, the damage done is a result of all your prior mandates, restrictions, and guidelines is something from which many people, businesses, and schools may never recover. Damage that is far worse than that of a virus, which is dangerous for less than 1% of our population. Please focus your future restrictions on the most vulnerable parts of our population, which the data shows is not our children under the ages of 18. And let rest, and let the rest of us make responsible decisions about our own activities and well-being. Please do not shut down businesses again, or there will soon be no businesses left in our county. You have conveyed what you believe to be the risks. Now let all of us grown-ups make our own educated decisions. You have no right to continue to restrict our rights the way you have. From Ashley Muehlfar. What a great turnout we had in this election, something to be proud of. Proud of the fact that we had so many registered voters exercise their civic duties in this election. Or were all of those who voted registered? With the recent climate surrounding the presidential election, many of us are looking to our own local results a little more closely. Many of us raised concerns regarding the $2 million grant from the Center for Tech and Civic Life. A center-left election reform advocacy group, which has brought up questions surrounding the use of this grant money. Did this grant money fund such technological manipulation like we have seen in the presidential race? Think Hammer and Scorecard. When did the rules change? Did I miss that meeting? I was under the impression that the county council members choose to run for election and are chosen by the people they represent. Sam Page vowed to be transparent, where is the transparency? The Center for Tech and Civic Life donated 6.3 million to five cities in Wisconsin, 12.3 million to Philadelphia, and Mark Zuckerberg of Facebook donated 250 million to the Center for Tech and Civic Life. This doesn't sound like a company that should be meddling around in any elections. I believe just as many counties across our great nation are doing, a recount of votes is necessary for St. Louis County after the involvement of such a company. Thank you for your time, and please remember the oaths you took, assuming they were not made of mockery. From Kara Share. So per Judicial Watch's press release, Missouri is listed as one of 29 states with voter registration rates exceeding 100%, at 102%. This is outrageous. I, along with a lot of others, will be contacting Eric Schmidt to do an immediate investigation to clear, into this clear cheating. We didn't trust you all to begin with, but now you let this occur. You all, especially you, Paige and Clancy, should be mortified and embarrassed. The only way you get, you both get your way is by cheating. You're both as dirty as the day is long, and the rest of the council has any shred of dignity left, will do the right thing, and also request an immediate investigation into this. From Carrie Peel. I'm writing regard, I'm writing regarding the threats of more shutdowns. COVID is this, is a virus doing what a virus does. It has weakened and it spreads. It won't go away because you hide away. Silly and ridiculous to think that it will. Cases may be up, but deaths are way low. As it has always, as it always should have been done, and has been done in the past with, in the past with viruses, quarantine those at risk, and the rest of the world lives their lives. Life is about risk. This is American, we have freedom of choice. It is not your job to decide for us. Tried to discuss ways to boost our immune system. Viruses will always be around, and we need to learn to live with them and keep our immune system strong. Why doesn't your task force talk about that? I'm, I'm also very disturbed by Paige, aka evil dictator. COVID shaming kids and schools during his press conference. That is uncalled for, and so wrong of him. His kids are trying to live their lives and prevent depression. Not worried about my teens getting a stupid virus, I am worried about them having depression and then leading to suicide. These kids, let these kids be kids and live their lives, stop the controller. From Margaret and Tim Graham. With November 3rd behind us, we tuned into the much-hyped county executive press conference on Monday, hoping to see our local government moving forward on behalf of its constituents. Minutes into the performance, our hopes were dashed with the return of threats out of contacts figures and defiance. And then came something new, COVID shaming kids. What purpose did specifically calling out two private schools in St. Louis County during Monday's press conference serve? Was it to alert residents whose children may have attended the events and thus been exposed to COVID? Isn't that what CARES-funded contact tracing system has been put in place to do? Was it to direct those citizens to community resources in case they needed them? No, no mention of that. Was it to underscore the increase of hospitalization rates in the 18 and underpopulation of St. Louis County? No, because there is no data science to support that. If the intent was to provide a heads-up to the community, then why call out only private schools? Certainly, public and private schools have both had outbreaks among their students. One thing private schools and public schools don't have in common is teachers' unions and their votes. Hmm. What we saw Monday is more of the same, shutdown threats, bullying, and an overt rejection of those with different views. But things have changed, Mr. Page, the election is over, you're in a leadership position, you need to lead instead of divide, you need to respond instead of bullying, you actually need to begin working on behalf of all St. Louis County residents, not just those who supported you. You appear to be still campaigning, using COVID shaming to fuel your power trip. Please do your job, stop the name-calling, start listening, and if you must, pick on someone your own side. From Jennifer Barker. We realize there is a global agenda that you are aiding. This isn't about keeping people safe. That's why we had 100, 102% voter turnout in St. Louis County. We warned you about taking the CTCL grant from our friend Zuckerberg. We have woken to your agenda and won't put up with it anymore, and we need our in-person council meeting, stop hiding from us. We aren't going away. Also, why do you keep saying, "Things won't get better until there's a vaccine"? Is that another job you're being paid for? It sure makes Pfizer proud. And there's a website in here listed, if my people, and then there's a verse here, Bible verse. "If my people who are called by my name will humble themselves and pray, and seek my face, and turn from their wicked ways, then I will hear from heaven, and I will forgive their sin, and I will heal their land." 2 Chronicles 1714. I will continue to pray for our nation, our state, and our local elected officials, and hope you will too. From Andrew Folsom. Now that the election is over, please stop politicizing our children. They deserve to be in school and have social lives and opportunities that all of us enjoyed as kids. We know a lot more about COVID-19 now than we did six months ago. Doctors are getting better at treating it, and death rates are down. Further, the sciences, the science overwhelmingly tells us, the kids and their activities are not the problem, and that shutdowns don't work. They really don't stop the spread and cause more. They really don't stop the spread and cause more harm than good. I ask all, if you think about how decisions you make impact everyone in a holistic view, not in some narrow tunnel vision view that scores you political points. Shutdowns hurt our youngest citizens the most, they get depressed, they don't learn, and miss out on some of the most significant developmental milestones that we were all so lucky to have. Further, nothing you can do, nothing you can do will stop house parties protests, private gatherings that are likely causing this increase in COVID patients. Finally, please stop saying colder weather is causing people to go inside more. It's been 70 out for a while now. From Marjorie Stoker. Charter violations. I wholeheartedly, I wholeheartedly agree with Councilman Harder and Fitch. Ms. O'Rourke needs to investigate. Her county executive is violating the county charter by working as an antecesiologist at Mercy and holding a position of county executive. This also leads to question about the distribution of the CARES Act funds as well.
Continuing with the comments, from Robert Lochner. I have been a county resident all my life and have been directly involved in the commercial real estate development market of the St. Louis region. I write with grave concerns over any further economic restrictions being considered in the ongoing effort to battle the coronavirus. This would be severely destructive to our local economy, put many of our neighbors, yours and mine, out of business, and lead to far greater mental health and economic problems than experienced previously. St. Louis County residents have the right to work, pray, live, play as they see fit, and do not deserve the tyranny that these restrictions represent. I have seen many businesses fail, construction and A&amp;E firms with massive layoffs, tenants unable to pay rent, local governments with layoffs, thousands of square feet of vacant office and retail space, empty hotels, and complicated and sometimes adversial workouts with lenders and tenants. All the restrictions and fear-mongering that caused these things did absolutely nothing to stop the spread of the virus. Two things are certain, however, if new restrictions are imposed. One, our economy will be destroyed, and two, the virus will continue to spread until a vaccine is available. Why do this to us? Have some faith in the human spirit and the self-responsibility of your residents to manage their own ways through this pandemic. Clearly, as we see economic indicators rebound, we've been successful in doing this, and deaths have slowed dramatically. You have done your part related to the public awareness surrounding the virus. Let residents do theirs to survive it. All that you impose, or hopefully choose not to impose, leaves a lasting impression on future generations. For the last couple of years, all my oldest son has talked about was moving back home after college, finding a job, starting a family, and living his own life. Now that he has graduated and been blessed with his first full-time job, he wants to leave St. Louis County over what he views as quickly becoming a police state. Is this what we want? To treat our residents so badly, they want to leave? I hope not. I request that no further restrictions be placed on any businesses, school gather, I'm sorry, social gatherings, sports, church, et cetera. Next comment is from Melanie Broyles. Well, here we are again. As a business owner, parent, and resident of St. Louis County, I am tired of feeling like we are continually ignored and even mocked by Dr. Page and Councilwoman Clancy. You may not like us, and we may not have voted for you, but as a leader, you should want to represent all of us. As a business owner, I am very concerned about a shutdown. We need to be open. Another shutdown would be the last straw for my business owners, for many business owners, sorry. We simply cannot survive. I am disappointed that Dr. Page thought it was appropriate to veto the bills that would allow our council members to have a say in our community. This is not a one-man show. I am hoping that once Shalonda Webb is present, she will want her voice heard, and we can revisit this topic. I saw data this week that in the 2016 election, we had 67% of registered voters take part in our election. In 2020, we somehow had 102%. That should concern all of us. Please keep our businesses open. Please keep our kids in school and participating in sports and activities. Please check into this election and determine how this has happened. Please do not write off a significant portion of the community you claim to lead. Next comment is from Elaine Take. Please do not do any more shutdowns in St. Louis County. Children need to be in school and taught good hygiene habits. Businesses cannot survive another shutdown. Please provide PPE to all schools, public and private. The money is there to make our county safe. Let the people take responsibility to wear masks, social distance. Next comment is from Katie Geary. I find it repugnant that you are threatening us with another shutdown due to an uptick in positive cases when the death rate has not changed. Additionally, only 35% of patients in our task force hospitals are St. Louis County residents. Do not force our county business owners to suffer any more than they have by increasing mandates or furthering capacity restrictions. You simply cannot mandate away a virus. It is like trying to control the wind. Next comment is from Caroline Whacker. Sam Page said Monday that our health department is overwhelmed and exhausted, and they don't have time or ability to police all of these private parties. He seemed to express the most concern over the virus's rate of increase, saying that if this doesn't change a week or two from now, and we're standing here with the same rate of increase, then we will have to be considering more restrictions. Dr. Garza said yesterday that we simply have to get this virus under control, because we cannot sustain this level of hospitalizations. Data indicates that more than half of people hospitalized are from outside the county. Is Dr. Page concerned that non-residents are coming to our already more restrictive county to do business, spread the virus, and then stay in our hospitals? I'm fairly confident that's not his concern, nor do I think that he's limiting restaurant parties to six to deter large families from dining out together. Will Dr. Page please clarify what would be the purpose of considering further restrictions? How would that help limit the spread if the main concerns are social habits of county residents? Surely, it wouldn't be a form of punishment for socializing or living without the approval of the DOH. The question being raised now among many residents is why the government is suddenly seeking such involvement in our social lives, questioning our decision-making skills, and publicly shaming our children for what they deem poor choices. I'm sure the statement about needing to consider more restrictions wasn't a government version of a parent threatening to ground a teenager if they don't behave, so can Dr. Page please clarify what was meant? What further restrictions would be considered, and how would they possibly help address the issue that he said needs to be addressed? The rate, the rate of increase? Finally, I'm certain that no one believes a high school party such as the Halloween one referenced by Dr. Page is a wise choice by high school students without a pandemic. People have concluded that Dr. Page did that as a way to shame kids and perhaps their parents for not adhering strictly to his advice and guidelines. Could he please clarify why he referenced that particular event over other large gatherings that have taken place in the last two weeks with and without DOH approval? Thank you. Next comment is from Lisa Riad. Recently, it seems that the groundwork is being laid for another shutdown in St. Louis County. In Sam Page's own words, please follow the data when determining what restrictions should be in place. Parties with 200 high school students are super-spreaders, not high school sports or in-person learning. Your legislation should deal with repercussions for parents who allow their children to have large parties. These are the dangers to our society now. Do not crack down on high school sports, schools, restaurants, and shops following existing guidelines. These are not where the problems lie, rather, it is in large gatherings where people behave recklessly and ignore the rules. Put executive orders in place for things that have actually been proven to spread COVID, not for things that have been working well and keeping people safe within the existing framework. Also, as the overseeing body of St. Louis County, I request that you look into the report from judicialwatch.org. I request that you look into the report from judicialwatch.org that says one hundred and two percent of the population of St. Louis County was registered to vote. If there is a flaw in our voting processes, you have an obligation to investigate and remedy it. I know we all want fair and honest elections. Next comment is from Lisa and Rich Custura, Custura? I hope I said that right. We appreciate your service to the St. Louis County community and understand the additional burden with COVID. As St. Louis County residents, we would like to express our concern in shutting down the county. We are in full support of mask mandates, but citizens need to be able to make decisions for their own families based on their circumstances. In our own case, we have one teenager that has been attending private grade school full-time since August with no cases and also plays ice hockey. Although there have been some cases with the organization's hockey team, his club has been proactive about quarantining teams in addition to the parents being forthcoming about symptoms and testing. Between full-time in-person school and being able to play hockey, we can see the difference in our son versus the time during lockdown in March, April, and May. You need to consider that most people are making decisions based on their own family situations, and we do consider safety a major factor. However, we can mitigate the risks on our own terms, like wearing masks, limiting the number of people we allow ourselves to socialize with, and social distancing, et cetera. We also keep up to date on actual facts around the COVID numbers, not just what is reported on the news, as these numbers tend to be biased for whatever agenda is being pushed that day. Shutting the county down is not a solution. There is some middle ground, but we all need to work together and not allow one person, Dr. Sam Page, to make these decisions for all. Next comment is from Dawn Herbeck. I am thankful for the opportunity to express my concerns in this format to the St. Louis County Council. First, I am perplexed at how Dr. Sam Page is able to violate the St. Louis County Charter and work his previous job and take the St. Louis County Executive position. He repeatedly, repeatedly said he was taking a leave to devote his time to being a county executive. Are we not opening ourselves up to more lawsuits that we cannot afford? Ms. Orwick, I am hopeful that you are investigating this violation and that you will be able to report to the citizens what corrective action will be taken. Now that the election is over, possibly Dr. Page will resign and go back to his medical practice, and you can safely have a Democrat replace you at the helm. Secondly, we are all bracing ourselves that Dr. Page will use his powers that you as a council refuse to limit to invoke stricter guidelines due to an increase in cases outside the St. Louis County area. How is that a solution as the majority of these cases are outside of St. Louis County? Thirdly, can someone explain how St. Louis County had a hundred and two percent voter turnout? If anything, COVID has made many of us more aware of what is happening in our local government and concerned for our future. This is good for us, but it is good for you that more, but is it good for you that more people are watching and listening? Next comment is from Josh Schur. On October sixteenth, twenty twenty, Judicial Watch released a study that found three hundred and fifty-three U.S. counties, stretching twenty-nine states with voter registration rates exceeding over one hundred percent. In other words, more people registered to vote than are eligible to vote. Well, congratulations, St. Louis County, for being the only county in Missouri with more registered voters than eligible voters at one hundred and two percent. Nicely done. At this point, it's not only obvious our election process has been raped by anti-American fascists, but they're not even, but they're not even good at hiding it. I urge the county council, as well as the citizens of St. Louis County, to contact Eric Schmidt immediately to investigate the legitimacy of our election. Next comment is from Carla Gruy. According to the data published in Judicial Watch, St. Louis County has more registered voters than eligible voting-age citizens, a hundred and two percent. You might ask, how common is this? Not very common, since no other county in Missouri was listed on that report. If we combine that disturbing fact with the facts listed below, I hope this council will request a thorough examination of all the ballots and the election laws to come up with an accurate and legal recount. Voting anywhere instead of the designated polling place left us more open to voter fraud, an unconstitutional decision. We sent out mail-in ballots all over the place and then allowed them to come in after the deadline. Unconstitutional. We allowed absentee ballots to be submitted after the published deadline. Unconstitutional. We have a county executive who refuses to have oversight. Unconstitutional. We accepted private money and used it for our, for our election. Unconstitutional. The citizens should be able to rely on a constitutional vote of only the legal voters who cast their ballots in a one-hundred percent legal manner. Changes to election rules are only supposed to be done through the legislative branch and elected officials. I also ask our council members to require a full investigation of the county executive since he does not abide by the promises he makes to follow our county charter. St. Louis County deserves the entire focus of the holder of this position. We deserve one-hundred percent honesty and transparency. Dr. Page's constant fight to retain unilateral control is simply wrong, and I hope you will order a complete and thorough investigation of every expenditure since he took, since he took office to uncover the corruption. Absolute power corrupts absolutely.
Following from Deb Mayer. I'm the mother of two high school students and fought for their right to play fall sports. Players, coaches, and parents did everything they could to give these kids the best experience possible. Both remained physically healthy, as did their teammates, and I saw a marked change in their mental and emotional well-being. Sadly, due to the very abbreviated season, my son did not have the opportunity to gain the stats and film needed to continue to compete with other athletes around the nation for a spot on a college roster. His dream of playing college football has all been ended. My children are slated to start in-person classes later this week. They need to be in the classroom, they need to be with their peers and their teachers. Hospitals are filling up, but not with people from St. Louis County and not with our kids. Why are we not focusing on the quarantining of those of high risk? It all seems to boil down to one thing: control. Mr. Page's actions and behaviors have continued to support what appears to be a strong need to control everything and everyone. If that isn't the case, why, Mr. Page? Did you veto the bills passed by our county council that were to put the appropriate checks and balances in place to limit any one person from having too much control? My children and I are very fortunate that we have excellent health and are very low risk of serious illness if we contract COVID-19. We are also very responsible. We have absolutely no problem with wearing a mask. We are doing everything we can to keep ourselves and those around us safe. We are also doing everything we can to support the local small businesses and keep them open. And I know countless others like us. So why is Sam Page threatening to stop us from doing all these things? Control. Please do what is right for the citizens of St. Louis County and keep us open. Please stop the public shaming of those who are doing what is right. Please focus your efforts on protecting those at high risk, not taking away, excuse me, not taking away the ability of the rest of us to continue to support one another's physical, mental, and emotional well-being. From Peggy Ward. I'm writing today to insist members of the council fully assume their role as elected officials return to in-person meetings. We are all aware coronavirus tests have gone down and continue to go down. Also, due to our wonderful President Trump's tireless work to have a vaccine created, we are now on the edge of, of more than one being ready, and new therapeutics are being released as well. No excuses, in-person meetings must be reinstated. Also, every citizen must be allowed to address the council, regardless of how many comments there are. It is our right to address our elected officials. I would also like to call out the election fraud that was brought to light, according to Judicial Watch, of one hundred and two percent of registered voters in St. Louis County casting ballots. Not only is a hundred and two impossible to be fair and accurate, in two thousand and sixteen, the number of registered voters who cast ballots was just sixty-seven percent. I think this needs to be addressed, and our council members should be equally concerned. As a St. Louis County resident, I stand against the fear mongering, politicizing, outright tyranny, and fascism of what is being perpetrated against, perpetrated over the residents of the county. I insist we get back to living. Our elected officials have no right to tell us how to live our lives or how to raise our children. From Diane Unger. I find it quite disheartening that you allowed a veto by Sam Page of bills two twenty-two and two twenty-three, by which Sam Page arbitrarily reinforced his sole power to stand. To council members Harder, Fitch, Trachis, and Daze, I commend you for voting for your constituents. To council members Clancy, Dunaway, and Gray, I suppose we have to wonder why. Would you not want to encourage oversight and accountability from the county executive? Do I smell a rat? I think we, the residents of St. Louis County, do smell a rat. The good news is, the residents are now tuned into your plan, as has been evident through the hundreds of emails that arrived to the council. Unfortunately, Chair Clancy now wants to limit the public input, and I would ask, why? The citizens are awakened, they're intent to be heard, is of utmost importance. Chair Clancy, try not, to try and squelch that is a clear indication of anticipated deception from the council. From Jennifer Reiser. I've been sending emails, making phone calls, leaving messages, and writing letters since August twenty-fifth of two thousand and twenty. I've lived my entire life in this county, and to say I am disappointed would be an understatement. What is becoming of the government of St. Louis County? When will there be checks and balances? One would think a leader would appreciate checks and balances to know he or she is actually doing the right thing by the people he or she is working for. How did St. Louis County have a hundred and two percent registration voting rate? How does this even occur? When will this be explained to the people of St. Louis County? As always, we do not need mandates. Children absolutely do not need to be masked. We, as rational, logical, educated adult citizens, can decide for ourselves appropriate actions to take and keep ourselves, our children, and our community healthy. The survival rate of this virus does not justify all the freedoms we are entitled to as citizens of the United States of America being taken away. From Chris Porter. Hello, and thank you for your time to read the public comments. How is it that a hundred and two percent of the population voted in St. Louis County? When has any county had a hundred percent of the vote? And where did the extra two percent come from? This is not just suspicious, but it is a statistical improbability. We are tired of the corruption in lives. God is taking back our country, and he wants you to repent. It's not too late. He will forgive you if you turn from your wicked ways. Sam, you know what you're doing is wrong because you hide from us when we want to talk. I ask you to investigate this election. Fraud is happening all around the country. People are rising up every day. We will not submit to your tyranny. If we confess our sins, he is faithful just to forgive us our sins and cleanse us from all unrighteousness. First John one nine. Thank you. From Stacy Bressure. I'm writing to express the importance of keeping St. Louis County open and not to push for another shutdown. We know about this virus and who is at risk, and we are begging to stay open. We can do this responsible and we responsibly, and we are asking to once again hold these meetings in person. From Liz Laflamme. Your exhaustive efforts to scare and shame residents of St. Louis County are deplorable. Yes, some can be seriously affected by this virus. Yes, we should do our part to help when we can. But just because we question the balance of power within the county council and the never-ending blanket restrictions does not mean we are anti-maskers and unreasonable. You all know the numbers are skewed without, without of county citizens seeking medical attention at St. Louis hospitals. The bed count is also skewed as beds and capacity have gone down in relation to staff shortages. This insanity has to stop. COVID will not be eradicated. The businesses soon will be, the businesses soon will be if you continue to take this approach. So, so will the mental well-being of those unduly restricted. You are overreaching your authority into families and personal choices. Those who are vulnerable should make the appropriate choices for their health. Those who are not in these risky categories should not have so much continued to be taken from them. Full shutdowns do nothing but hurt people and businesses. From Wendy Regian. I'm sick and tired of all this lockdown and mask BS. You cannot control a virus. It is going to spread whether you lock down the country or wear masks. It is just a fact. Most people that wear masks regularly get the virus. Personally, I do not wear a mask if it is at all possible, and if I do, I do not wear it correctly, I seem to be just fine. I've been to Florida several times throughout the year and don't wear a mask, and guess what? I'm just fine. Florida is number three on the inaccurate Corona cases list, and they are so much more relaxed about this whole thing. And the cases are not any worse than Missouri, and they have millions more people there. I guess because they have a governor that has a brain. This is sickening, and I'm so fed up with Sam Page and his holier-than-thou attitude. All this is, is a liberalist agenda to control the people. Guess what? A mandate is not the law, and it is against the Constitution, so good luck getting me to follow any of your shutdowns, guidelines, et cetera. I'll be going to St. Louis County for everything: gas, groceries, restaurants, and whatever else I need. You are not getting a dime of my money. I will, I'll also be paying my real estate taxes and property taxes in protest. I'm gonna skip the next sentence. Kids need to go back to school and learn, play sports, work, socialize, and be normal. Adults need this too. Quit the fear mongering. Hospitals may be full of capacity of the staff that they have, but you forgot to mention all the patients do not live in St. Louis County. And I apologize for skipping the one sentence, but I'm not gonna read that. From Courtney, I'm gonna mispronounce this and I apologize, Blason Game. I would like to first address a few things. How on earth did we have a hundred percent, a hundred and two percent turnout for voting in St. Louis County? That's impossible. Even a hundred percent is highly unlikely. When will, when will we be having in-person meetings? Now that we are all aware of how important local government is. We want to be involved, take actions, and participate. That is what a free and honest government wants, right? Opinions and options from their citizens. How long are you going to try to control us as a society? Mask mandate, has there been any studies to prove long-term effects of wearing a mask? How will it affect my children in the future? Breathing issues, chronic headaches, fatigue? Also, the mental health in the area? I have two children with severe anxiety and are in counseling weekly for. What about the ones who do not have parents who can afford this, especially as you talk about another shutdown? Geez, I thought the mask mandate was supposed to take care of another shutdown. From Jessica Ledwin. I'm a resident and taxpayer of St. Louis County. I, like many, was disappointed in the local election results last week, although not shocked considering how many Democrats live in St. Louis County. However, now that the election is behind us, I am hopeful we can all work together to bring some unity and prosperity to St. Louis County. I am optimistic that our leaders will work together to do what is best for our citizens. I'm supporting the continuing the mask mandate. supporting the continuing the mask mandate. I think it would have more success if our neighboring counties did the same. I'm asking that you do not put any further restrictions in place. Most specifically, please allow small businesses and schools to remain open. We are not seeing spread in businesses or schools. The cases in schools are happening from family or other out-of-school get-togethers. It is not spreading in school. My three teenagers need in-person learning so very badly. I saw firsthand how the lockdown hurt my middle child last spring and summer. He was headed on a scary downward spiral. He is a different kid now that he is back in school with his teachers and friends. Schools are doing a tremendous job of keeping the kids safe. I am grateful for that. Please take into consideration all the scary negative impacts that shutting down our community will have on our most vulnerable residents. Please allow us to stay open and allow our kids to stay in school. Thank you.
Continuing with the comments from Rebecca Prang. Do not let your fear overcome the actual virus. Give your constituents the power of choice. Keep businesses open. Keep schools open. Closing businesses, schools, and youth sports is far worse than this virus. Government does not need to overreach. People will get sick, they will recover, and life will continue. The data supports this. Next comment is from Jill Clark. More than half of the hospitalizations in St. Louis County are from people admitted that live outside our county. Why should we be paying the price of restrictions and shutdowns due to other counties' numbers? Is it really worth it to ruin the lives of the people in this county? Shutting down or restricting anything more in St. Louis County ignores the real problem, which is actually isolating only those in high-risk categories. Everyone else needs to be able to work, go to school, and continue in activities. Next comment is from Mary Lee Sauer. Sam Page is surrounded by controversy yet continues in his authoritarian ways. He has minimized his own appointees to mere figureheads, and he is failing to solve problems for St. Louis County. COVID rates are increasing and businesses suffering. The November election should be a referendum on his job performance, but how do we know that the results and message of the election are reliable? The council should request significant data and procedural analysis from the election board to understand what occurred in this election. Sam Page, Lisa Clancy, and Kelly Dunaway pushed to fund our election with outside money despite many resident requests against it. Clancy even called a separate meeting outside of the standard council meeting to try to push this through. This tainted our election before it even happened. Now we are hearing that in Pennsylvania, where ballot harvesting is also illegal, there are key signs that it has occurred. For example, twenty-five thousand absentee ballots requested in Pennsylvania from voters residing in three nursing homes were all received on the same day. St. Louis County should evaluate if this has happened here. Ballot harvesting was a concern of many St. Louis County residents. The county allowed online voter registration with copies of documents instead of originals. These individuals could then request an absentee ballot. What will the county do to ensure that now that those now registered voters are valid? Are those registered voters noted in the database to obtain original documents to verify their status? Since St. Louis County residents could vote anywhere, that means that our software, at a minimum, our check-in software, was online. How was it determined that our election software would be safe if connected to the Internet? What was done to protect and monitor against hacks for this software on Election Day, and what tests of voters versus ballots were performed after Election Day to ensure that our election was not hacked? Why are we the only place in Missouri to have more registered voters than age-eligible voters? Due to the acceptance of outside money, the surprisingly high voting rates, and the odd results compared to the two thousand and sixteen election, the election board has much to do to prove honesty and protections for our elections. The council should demand minimal, I'm sorry, minimum monthly updates to address concerns to ensure we can have faith in our future elections in St. Louis County. Next comment is from Deb Matush. Are you snickering or exhaling from the outcome of last week's election? If you're snickering, remember, he who laughs first laughs last. If you're exhaling, could it be that you were holding your breath for the outcome? Or it's highly possible you knew you had it in the bag because of the Center for Tech and Civic Life. The votes don't make sense, Sam. Two to one margin smells rotten. And now with the news about who it was that invested in the Center for Tech and Civic Life and how this council pushed it through even with resistance from constituents, it's off-kilter. I may not be the sharpest tool in the shed, but I'm resourceful, tenacious, and dumb like a fox, and I intend to dig and dig and dig until there is some sense made of this. If it turns out that you won fair and square, I will tip my hat. Until then, I'm digging in. Next comment is from Kelly Hickinbotham. St. Louis County residents that are impatient in a St. Louis County hospital St. Louis County residents that are impatient in a St. Louis County hospital make up just thirty-five percent of the census. Sixty-five percent of the admitted patients are from outside St. Louis County. St. Louis County contact tracers have the proof that the majority of COVID cases are not being transmitted through schools, youth sports, teams, boutiques, gyms, or restaurants. Yet Sam Page has threatened to shut all of these businesses and activities down. How will that help the hospitalizations in the future? When the overwhelming majority of citizens seeking hospitalizations are not St. Louis County residents, nor are they in the age group of fifteen, I'm sorry, of five to eighteen years old, I do not understand how shutting down St. Louis County businesses, schools, and youth sports will alleviate the St. Louis County hospital system. Next comment is from Kathleen Giannino. I have two daughters, an eighth grader and a tenth grader. Both of my children have been attending school since August and playing sports all summer, fall, and there have been minimal cases resulting in participating and attending school or sports. What is getting out of hand at this point is the needless quarantining of healthy children because there is a possibility of close contact. The data
Looks like we lost Lynn. Chris, are you able to pick up where she left off?
Yes, ma'am. Continuing, excuse me. From Liz Russell Drummond. Sam, the way you've treated St. Louis County is abhorrent, and I can't believe you were elected to do more of the same, if not worse. Please put the power trip you were on in check. We are Americans living in a free country for now, and we demand to make decisions about our health and well-being, independent of Big Brother. You can either be considered and remembered as a good representative or a hated tyrant. I hope you choose the one your kids will be proud of and that St. Louisans can live with. From Brenda Kimberlin. Please keep fighting for a right to be heard and represented in county decisions. Sam Page can't seem to lead. He holds press conferences so he can scold us about masks, even though I haven't seen a single person not wearing a mask where they're required to do this in the county. He blames schoolchildren and teenagers for driving the spread on the same day that the CDC states that adults eighteen and over are driving the spread. Now he's promising to shut down our economy once again. With the final nail in the coffin as businesses and employers close and Amazon gets richer. You can suppress us all you want, but we will continue to speak up for what's right until there's nothing left to say. Thank you. From John Penske. Look at Trump, look at Page, look at Trump, look at Page. Look at Stanger, look at Page, look at Stanger, look at Page. Is there any difference? No, they are all the same page. White fragility is real. When one is faced with losing power, they show their true colors. Look at Stanger, Trump, Page, and Clancy, all cut from the same page. Yes, we're talking to you, Chair Clancy, and Sam Page, Stanger, or Dr. Scampage. The two of you haven't used the words equity in a while, but your work to date could serve as a master's class on hypocrisy and equity, or white people's work, your choice. Are you not saying equity because the election is over? Is it because the black community knows that your only agenda is to fund Lisa's Gladiator Network of Nonprofits and get Scampage to the US Senate? Perhaps the public needs a progress report on all things equity in St. Louis County, along with the un, I'm assuming this word's supposed to be unredacted data, used to create said report. Please stop using rhetoric that makes you appear to be pro-black when your actions say otherwise. Hypocrisy looks good on no one, and you two are sounding like Mitch McConnell these days. We have real opportunities for change if you'll stop acting like politicians. Start with a charter amendment to provide the people that suffer from the justice system a true civilian review board, as requested by Dr. Punch. FYI, St. Louis City has one, and we know daily all good things done in the city, even former employees will be implemented or employed by St. Louis County. Thank you for your time. From Janet Penske. Dr. Scampage, the scam that you orchestrated to become county executive, while keeping your separate second job that pays at least five hundred thousand isn't just greed, it also exposes the contempt that you have for checks and balances. Regular citizens don't have the luxury of having too high-paying jobs, especially when it's prohibited by the charter. In North County, people work two jobs because equity lacks in St. Louis County because of your greed and inaction on equity. How many businesses have closed in St. Louis County because of your inept leadership and the lack of oversight over the SPR and childcare programs? That should be researched and presented to the public. What's worse than you having a second job, Dr. Scampage, is the fact that you lied to the council and the public about it for the last past year. First to councilman Harper, and then to a reporter. In transparency, you proactively divulge and share information. You don't hold back information. While you're an anesthesiologist, you play doctor in the county, but you are merely another ambitious politician with no checks and balances. Even I didn't keep two jobs, you, sir, will not become US Senator. I'll say, and I know what a double standard exists in St. Louis County, but let's see what the council does. Will the council delay this investigation like all the others? How many barriers will SCAM's consigliere Beth Orwick put in place to protect Don Scampage and prevent this investigation? Perhaps a conflict of interest exists for Beth, and this matter should be forwarded to the FBI. If former county executive Julie had kept his job during his tenure, what would the council do? Hopefully, what the charter requires, and nothing short of Scampage resigning and paying back all the dollars received for the executive salary. Anything short There's a Anything short should be considered theft of government funds, and that is a serious allegation. Madam Chair, that concludes all the public comments. Lynn isn't back, maybe she's back.
She's back. I'm back. Would you like me to continue?
Yes, please do.
Okay. I'll go ahead and start over with Kathleen Giannino's comment. I have two daughters, an eighth grader and a tenth grader. Both of my children have been attending school since August and playing sports all summer and fall, and there have been minimal cases resulting in participating and attending school or sports. What is getting out of hand at this point is the needless quarantining of healthy children because there is a possibility of close contact. The data shows first the recovery rate is ninety-nine percent in children if they do in fact get sick. Furthermore, very few kids in quarantine develop the virus while in quarantine. We are essentially imprisoning children for no reason. I also firmly believe if they are able to attend school and engage in activities, there is less time to socialize in unsupervised activities. School and sports are going to great lengths to keep children healthy, and they are succeeding. What would be nice is if the council could come up with some ideas to protect the vulnerable of our community, the ones that are requiring hospital beds and ventilators. You keep preaching about the problems in the hospital, the problems the hospitals are having, but what have you done to protect them, the real vulnerable of our society? Excuse me. Where are those ideas? Maybe you can focus on those things instead of limiting what the least vulnerable of our society engage in. Next comment is from Dennis Porter. Sam, I know you have threatened to shut everything down again. Our county cannot afford to do this. This is breaking small businesses. I have family in the medical field, and they say they are busy due to surgeries and catch-up procedures, not COVID. Suicides are way up. Depression and anxiety is up. Income is down, especially for small businesses. I know you are being told what to do and are well compensated for it, so I ask you to start fresh and do the right thing. I know it must be very hard when you have people offering you favors and lots of money. I know it must be very tempting. No shutdowns. I would also like someone to look into why there was one hundred and two percent turnout for voters. What? This is a total joke. Like, we are supposed to believe this? Over one hundred percent? How does that happen? Fraud. Next comment is from Amber Mueller. While we understand that the cases have increased, we also must recognize this is due to an influx of testing. While we support our medical heroes in hospitals who are worn down, we must also recognize that a large part of this is due to staffing cuts. Also, over fifty percent of the hospitalizations are from outside of our county and city, so why are we the ones being threatened with another shutdown? The death rate is going down, which is good news. We should help our hospitals and medical staff with whatever support they need so as to not be overwhelmed. The task force should not consider another county shutdown, nor shame children in schools, but rather discuss more options on how to keep people safe. Can we also share with people they can control a lot of their health and risk through diet, exercise, sleep, vitamins, et cetera? Let's also encourage people to better their health, not solely rely on a scare tactic of doom and gloom and powerless citizens who need Page to save us from ourselves. If you continue to isolate and shut down schools and businesses, this will destroy our mental health and economy. Your data continues to be hidden and inconsistent. Our schools are at risk of having to shut down due to impossible exposure or quarantine rules resulting in staffing issues. My physician stated if my exposed twelve-year-old daughter was to develop symptoms, it would be within three to four days. She said no children are coming in on day thirteen with pop-up symptoms of the virus. There's an opportunity to change the narrative and restore power to the people, which will result in less resistance and hopefully shared responsibility and support. Knowledge is power. Continued or increased government control will backfire. Next comment is from Kate Stratton. Council members, you must fully assume your roles as elected officials and pass bills to limit Sam Page's authoritarian rule. Bills number two twenty-two and two twenty-three passed, but Sam Page vetoed them. I ask again, why don't you want oversight, Dr. Page? A good leader wants accountability. The council must also stop Lisa Clancy's attempt to keep us from addressing the council in large numbers. She must not be permitted to limit public comment to video only, or limit the number of people allowed to utilize public comment. Additionally, Lisa Clancy must permit the return to in-person meetings. This is ridiculous. If masks work, then this should be a no-brainer. Sam Page issued another round of threats on Channel Two yesterday. He plans to lock St. Louis down if we don't follow additional unconstitutional mandates. Even though coronavirus cases are up, deaths are down. This should be a cause for celebration. Meanwhile, the flu has magically disappeared. The CDC said it was safe for people that tested positive with coronavirus to vote. It must not be as serious for everyone as it once was, even though Dr. Page told everyone yesterday that we must all stay away from each other. It is a little hypocritical that the Democrats' people gather in the streets celebrating for an election that is still being countered with no masks and no distance between each other. other. Dr. Page, please stop the fear mongering and let us get back to living. It's worth noting that we are experiencing a spike in coronavirus while under a countywide mask mandate. If the masks work, why is there a spike? Will further restrictions make a difference? One more thing, I can't believe Sam Page had the audacity to call out three high schools yesterday for kids gathering and having fun over Halloween. Sam Page has no right to tell us how to live our lives or how to raise our children. I guess now that your son's sports season is over, you don't care if you ruin other high school students' chances for scholarships. Next comment is from Sarah Barnes. Our community cannot sustain another shutdown. Our children are suffering the ramifications of this ordeal. Please start as far away from the children, this includes high schoolers, as possible. Please rethink the entire narrative that you are allowing and not allowing the public to do things. This narrative is dangerous. Mandates are recommendations. Can we please release a best practices recommendation concerning the high-risk population, which is clearly defined by data, and leave the rest of the population alone? Otherwise, we will never be out of this. No measures can mitigate the spread of cases to zero, so I think we can see now that we prematurely shut down our region out of fear and that it only served to delay the inevitable. This only prolongs the ordeal. Stop the hospitals. Madam Chair, that is the final comment.
Thank you Lynn and thank you Chris. With that, we will proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number 251, introduced by councilmember Clancy. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant from the Missouri Department of Mental Health of up to $501,443, appropriating the same for support of the Department of Public Health's Opioid Use Justice Initiative project for inmates in the Buzz Westfall Justice Center, opioid use disorder, and authorizing execution of necessary documents. Bill number 252, introduced by councilmember Harder. An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute two contracts with Global Import Solutions LLC for lease of office and warehouse space at 18445 Edison Avenue and 18427 Edison Avenue, and authorizing the county executive to terminate existing leases for the same properties that were authorized by ordinance number 25,609 as amended by ordinance number 25,972 and section 724.020 St. Louis County Revised Ordinances. Madam Chair, that is all the bills.
We will move on to perfection.
Thank you. Bill number 20, introduced by councilmember Harder.
Please hold bill number 20.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 32, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
I move to hold bill number 32.
Bill number 32 is held.
Bill number 175, introduced by councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold bill 175.
Bill number 175 is held.
Bill number 176, introduced by councilmembers Fitch and Harder.
I move to hold bill 176.
Bill 176 is held.
Bill number 221, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Please hold bill number 221.
Bill 221 is held.
Bill number 245, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill 245.
Second.
Second, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, bill number 245 is perfected.
Bill number 246, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number 246.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, bill number 246 is perfected.
Bill number 247, introduced by councilmember Harder for councilmember Tracus.
I move to perfect bill number 247.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, bill number 247 is perfected.
Bill number 248, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move to perfect bill number 248.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, bill number 248 is perfected.
Bill number 249, introduced by councilmember Dunaway.
I move to perfect bill number 249.
Second, please.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, bill number 249 is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number 320, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move to hold bill number 320, bill 320 is held.
Substitute bill number 2 for bill number 385, introduced by councilmember Dunaway. Madam Chair, we have a substitute bill.
Uh, please read the substitute.
Yes ma'am. Substitute bill number 3 for bill number 385, introduced by councilmember Dunaway. An ordinance amending chapter 1202 of title 12 St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended traffic code by repealing and reenacting section 1202.010 pertaining to definitions, amending chapter 1210 title 12 St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended, regulations for bicyclists by repealing and reenacting section 1210.050 and adding a new section 1210.055 pertaining to riding bicycles on roadways and amending chapter 1212 title 12 St. Louis County Revised Ordinances 1974 as amended by adding and enacting a new section 1212.175 and a new section 1212.200 pertaining respectively to drivers passing bicyclists and the vulnerable road users.
I move for the adoption of substitute bill number 3 for bill number 385.
Second, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, substitute bill number 3 for bill number 385 is adopted.
I move to hold substitute bill number 3 for bill number 385. I want to give everyone some time to look it over, check the red line. We've had many conversations about this over the past year. I've done my best to try to incorporate what my, uh, what fellow councilmembers as well as bike advocates wanted to see in this legislation. Um, and I, my ultimate goal has always been to provide, um, legislation that gives the judgment to the cyclist, um, who is on the road without the protection of being surrounded by an automobile. Um, just to be clear, this piece of legislation has absolutely nothing to do with bike lanes. This is really just about giving the judgment call to the person on the bike or other vulnerable road users. So again, you have a week to take a look. If anybody has any questions or follow-up issues, please reach out to me and hopefully we'll move forward with this, uh, on final passage next week. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dunaway. With that, um, substitute bill number 3 for bill number 385 is held.
Bill number 14, introduced by councilmembers Tracus, Days, Dunaway, Fitch, Walton Gray, Clancy, and Harder.
We move to hold bill number 14.
Bill number 14 is held.
Bill number 76, introduced by councilmembers Dunaway and Harder.
Please hold bill number 76.
Bill number 76 is held.
Bill number 202, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
Um, we're still working on this bill. Um, I am in close contact with respective stakeholders on this bill and, um, we are not ready to move it. So with that, I will hold bill number 202 and bill number 202 is held.
Bill number 220, introduced by councilmember Tracus.
Please hold bill number 220.
Bill number 220 is held.
Bill number 234, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move a final passage of bill number 234.
Second, great.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 234, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 234 is finally passed.
Bill number 235, introduced by councilmember Fitch.
I move for final passage of bill 235.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on bill 235, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 235 is finally passed.
Bill number 236, introduced by councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for final passage of bill number 236.
Second, please.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill 236, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 236 is finally passed.
Bill number 237, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 237.
Second, great.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, Madam Chair, on bill 237, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 237 is finally passed.
Bill number 238, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 238.
Second, great, second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Abstained.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill 238, there are six ayes and one abstention.
Bill number 238 is finally passed.
Bill number 239, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 239. Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill 239, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 239 is finally passed.
Bill number 240, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 40.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill 240, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 240 is finally passed.
Bill number 241, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 241.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Excuse me, councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill 241, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 241 is finally passed.
Bill number 242, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 242.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill 242, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 242 is finally passed.
Bill number 243, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 243.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill 243, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 243 is finally passed.
Bill number 244, introduced by councilmember Dunaway.
I move for final passage of bill number 244.
Second, please.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder. Madam Chair, on bill number 244, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 244 is finally passed.
Bill number 250, introduced by councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of bill number 250.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on bill number 250, there are seven ayes.
Bill number 250 is finally passed. Moving on to resolutions.
Madam Chair, we have two resolutions this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by councilmember Walton Gray.
I move for the adoption of resolution number one.
Second, please.
Roll call.
Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
Aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
Aye.
Member Gray.
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus.
Aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Aye.
Madam Chair, on resolution number one, there are seven ayes.
Motion carries, resolution number one is adopted.
Resolution number two, introduced by council members Walton Gray and Dunaway.
I move for the adoption of resolution number two.
Please read the resolution.
Yes, sir. Resolution, whereas the county council finds it advisable that the St. Louis County Police Department seek to increase positive interaction between youth in St. Louis County and St. Louis County police officers and to increase opportunities for officers to develop a harmonious rapport with the people of the communities they serve. And whereas the council does not support law enforcement presence in schools, as school districts should hire people who have been trained by and are employed by the Department of Education and who have specifically been trained in keeping children safe rather than law enforcement officers who are hired and trained by police departments. Now therefore, be it resolved by the County Council of St. Louis County, Missouri, as follows. Section one, the County Council encourages the St. Louis County Board of Police Commissioners, Board, to establish one or more training programs regarding the presence of officers in the community. Section two, the council further encourages that said community relations training program or programs for officers address diversity, sensitivity, and cultural competency, as well as maintaining open avenues of communication between communities and officers. The council further recommends officers be required to attend such training upon hire and every two years thereafter, and that such training curriculum include discipline, public information activity, and efficient frontline police work taught by an experienced law enforcement officer. Section three, the council does not recommend nor advocate for the presence of officers in schools' settings. The council further recommends that in the event a school district count, contract, contracts with St. Louis County for officers located in its schools, that such officers receive specialized training and that such training curriculum be reviewed by a panel that consists of a parent, a child psychologist, and a social justice professional, as well as the board. Section four, the administrative director is directed to send certified copies of this resolution to the chair and members of the St. Louis County Board of Police Commissioners and to the superintendent of police.
Madam Chair, discussion?
Yes, before we have discussion, was there a second?
No, ma'am.
And I will second that.
I, yes, I think we need to have a second before we have discussion, and there's been a second from Councilwoman Days. Um, yes, Councilman Trachis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, while some aspects of this resolution are indeed worthy, uh, much of it, quite honestly, is, um, ill-conceived. Um, not the least of which is the idea that somehow Missouri Department of Elementary and Secondary Education is even remotely capable or equipped to train a security personnel. So for that and, and other reasons-
They didn't say that. They didn't say that.
Excuse me, please. Um, for that and other reasons, I'm going to vote no on this resolution, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Anyone else? Uh, Councilman Fitch.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I agree with the very first paragraph in this resolution. The rest of it is, I don't know who wrote it or where it came from, but clearly whoever wrote it, wherever it came from, and at least those that are sponsoring have no clue what our school resolve, officers do, our school resource officers do in our schools. We have forty St. Louis County police officers that work in our schools. If you follow the county police department on Twitter or Facebook, you will see today that one of the school resource officers received his doctorate in education today. So Dr. Will Munson, who works at one of our North County School Districts, is one of those SROs that you say, those of you that believe in this resolution, should not be there. Uh, all I could say is that whoever wrote this didn't do their homework whatsoever because every school resource officer, before they go to a school, has to have training from the National Association of School Resource Officers. That's a group full of, made up of educators that talk to the officers of what they expect those officers to do in the schools. Keep in mind, this program is absolutely voluntary by our school districts. They come to the police department and ask for these school resource officers to be there. As a matter of fact, if that officer calls in sick that day, they're calling around trying to find another officer to come in and take their place. They teach classes with the kids, law classes, how to handle traffic stops, all of those things. So just to throw something out there like this, even though I realize it's a resolution that means nothing, uh, and to say that this council doesn't support, uh, law enforcement officers in the school, I think is the absolute wrong message to send. And if the school districts don't want them, all they have to do is say, we don't want this contract anymore, because they are paying for it. The school districts are paying for those officers to be there. And that's what I have to say, so I will be voting no on this as well. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilman Harder.
Yes, uh, to piggyback on what, uh, that, um, I represent the Parkway School District and the Rockwood School District in my district, and, and they love the RSO programs that are both provided by St. Louis County, Baldwin, Chesterfield, and the like. And, uh, these officers dedicate their lives to these kids and teach them a lot of great things that maybe they're not learning at, at home, as well as, uh, handling issues with bullying and other things handled at school. And to make these statements that seem to be, um, ill-advised if not made up, uh, I, I cannot support these, these, uh, claims and wherasses in this resolution, because I know how good our RSOs are in the Rockwood and Parkway School District, and for me to do otherwise would be a disservice to them. So, uh, I will also be vo- voting no.
Anything else? All right.
I'd love to hear those that are in favor of it, the argument for being in favor of it. Would anybody like to speak about that?
Well, Councilman Fitch, I, it, everyone knows that if they would like to add a comment about it, that they can.
I just think it's, it's, you know, something the public needs to understand and hear why those that are supporting to remove these officers from the schools, why they feel that way.
But it doesn't say to remove the, the officers from-
Well, it says does not support, this council does not support law enforcement presence in school. What does that mean? You don't want them there.
Remove them.
You don't want them there, is what it says.
Does it say to remove from school?
Councilman Fitch, you've, you've, you've raised your concerns. Um, Councilwoman Dunaway.
So the reason I support this is because I think it's really important that we start having a, a, a community-wide conversation about what police officers should be doing and what police officers shouldn't be doing. And in my opinion, police officers shouldn't be in schools. I think this should be a program that is run by the Department of Education. I don't believe that police officers should be the first responders in a number of issues, um, that we can talk about later. But I want to start a conversation and keep a conversation going with the community about what police officers shouldn't, should it be doing, where they should and shouldn't be wearing uniforms, and how the impact of having a uniformed police officer in our education, our schools, and in the educational environment, how that impacts schoolchildren, and I just don't believe that it should be a police department program. And I understand what you're saying, Councilwoman Fitch, about how the, um, the schools pay for this, but I would prefer to see it a school-funded and run program with i- if they, like the, the, the SRO you were just talking about with his, um, with his education PhD, that's amazing. That is the exact kind of person that I would want in the school. And I would love to see that person and others like them running programs like this. I just don't think it should be within the police department.
Councilman Trachis.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, um, want to pick up where Councilwoman Dunaway, um, just left off, and, and having a conversation is one thing, and that's not a bad idea. Passing this resolution as is, is at a minimum premature and very likely a bad idea. Um, just today, today, in the Wentzville School District, a student was, um, apprehended for carrying a firearm and ammunition. Now, I don't know, but I think I'd rather have a police officer on sight for that type of situation. In any case, the point is that a conversation may be warranted. This resolution is premature and ill-conceived, and for that and the reasons articulated by Councilman Fitch and Harder and myself, I'm going to vote no. Thank you.
One last follow-up.
Yes, Councilman Fitch.
And Councilwoman Dunaway, I'd be happy to help you rewrite this. That would make it exactly what, what you've said, as opposed to the line, "does not support law enforcement presence in school." Because, like I said, Dr. Will Munson, who's in our schools, uh, I support him being in schools, and I think you said you do too. So if you would be interested in rewriting this, that's, makes it, uh, more palatable for everyone, I'd be happy to help you.
Any further comment? We do have a second, um, so we will be, uh, calling the roll.
Yes, ma'am. Councilmember Days.
Aye.
Councilmember Dunaway.
You're on mute, Councilwoman.
Um, Councilman Fitch, before I vote, I do really appreciate that offer, and I will definitely take you up on it next time, but for tonight, I am going to vote aye.
Councilmember Fitch.
No.
Councilmember Gray.
I do want to state that I, I do know a police officer Munson very well. He's a great officer, and I, he's been in the school district since my children were in school, and they are well-grown now. So I, I don't want, like I said, I didn't say they should be removed from the schools. And I vote aye.
Councilmember Clancy.
Aye.
Councilmember Trachis.
No.
Councilmember Harder.
No.
Madam Chair, on resolution number two, there are four ayes and three noes.
Um, resolution number two is adopted. Moving on to unfinished business.
Item number one.
Um, this has been on our agenda for some time now. Um, it got a little bit delayed, um, last month, but I would like to move this this evening, so this is the appointment of Mr. Doug Burris to the Director of the Department of Justice Services, um, and I move that the appointment be approved as recommended.
Second days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number two, sixth district.
The change of owner be approved as recommended or requested, please.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three, sixth district.
Plan specifications and detailed estimate of cost be approved and the director of procurement be authorized to advertise for bids pending federal highway administration authorization as requested. A copy of this report be sent to the interested parties.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number four, sixth district.
Plan specifications and detailed estimate of cost be approved and the director of procurement be authorized to advertise for bids pending federal highway administration authorization as requested, and a copy of this report be sent to interested parties.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item number five, sixth district.
Plan specification and detailed estimate of cost be approved and the director of procurement be authorized to advertise for bids pending federal highway administration authorization as requested, and a copy of this report be sent to interest, interested parties.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Uh, moving on to new business, prepared orders.
Madam Chair, we have three prepared orders this evening. Prepared order number one, in the matter of communication from Jennifer Keating, Acting Director of Procurement, and Todd A. Martin, Director of Administration, requesting authorization to dispose of certain personal property.
I move for the adoption of order number one.
Second days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, order number one is adopted.
Prepared order number two, in the matter of the request of the records manager for permission to destroy certain books, papers, and records of the Department of Planning.
I move for the adoption of order number two.
Second days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, order number two is adopted.
And prepared order number three, in the matter of the Director of Revenue's request to transfer all interest in certain real estate acquired by him as trustee at the collector's two thousand four tax sale.
I move for the adoption of order number three.
Second days.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, order number three is adopted. Um, that brings us to the end of our agenda. Is there any further comments from the council? I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, the meeting is adjourned. Have a good evening, everybody.